It is six thirty, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. The Verge City Council on January twentieth. Any sort of some concerns Julie?
I don't know.
Additions or deletions to the agenda, there'll be one addition which will be solar for the fire hall. It will be, we'll make it number eight and if Griffin Peck from West Central Initiative isn't quite here at that time, we'll just move it down when he gets on Zoom. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition?
Motion second.
We have a motion from James, a second from Paul, all in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Then we have the consent agenda. Anybody want anything pulled or otherwise, anything motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
That motion from Paul is second.
So moved.
From Bruce, I'll vote for the vote, all in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
You post, consent agenda approved. Our first item is the place, time and date, we start a new year. So whether we want to change our meeting date, our time or place, or are we good with what we back? We are the third Tuesday of the month at six thirty. Is that working for everyone?
At the present time, yeah.
Third Tuesday.
Yep.
Yeah. Sure don't conflict with the Lions.
Yep, yep, we've kind of backed away from that Wednesday.
Yeah, it was, you know, they used a lot of parking and.
Yes.
Yeah. It was somewhat noisy and.
It's okay, that can I have a motion to maintain our current schedule with the third Tuesday at six thirty here?
Motion.
Meeting room. We have a motion from Paul is there second?
All second.
All in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
Appointment of acting mayor, ended in the portfolio, the appointment was really to recommend no change, so it would be James Stinger. Any other comments or a recommendation? Otherwise I'll call for a motion to accept James Stinger as acting mayor?
Motion.
A motion from Paul is second?
Second.
And a second from Bruce, all in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
You post. Okay, then we have our appointments. I think unless somebody wants one pulled out, I think we'll do the whole section instead of one by one. I would just note for the appointment of the city attorney and the engineer, you have the annual review in there and we will be providing those to Blaine with Seth and to Karen, so I think you saw the overall results for attorney, overall very favorable results, however noted, it's been six months, we can realize we don't have a full year. On the annual review for engineering acknowledgement in favor of all of the expertise and knowledge that has been brought from the engineering service and an opportunity for improvement was relative to communications, more timely or better communication. So just so that you may note at the annual review as we approve these appointments. So we have the council portfolio, attorney, official paper, the freezing form, the designation of the city website, the depository, Verge State Bank and engineer.
Motion.
Do you have a motion from Paul to accept those appointments, is there a second?
All second.
There's a second from James, all in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Okay. And it looks like Griffin is on. So number eight, we have Griffin Peck from West Central Initiative who wanted to talk to us about solar and the city fire hall. So I'll hand it over to you Griffin.
Awesome, well, good evening, everyone. Sorry, I could not be there in person, the roads were starting to look a little slick out there and I did not want to drive back to Battle Lake after, after the meeting, so glad I can join you all on Zoom. Today, I'm here to talk a little, provide some updates about the solar project for the community center and also talk a little bit about a new opportunity. So first, I'll talk a little bit about your, the building you're currently sitting in, which is the community center. As you've probably surmised, there's been quite a few delays in the contractor's processing in getting solar up. However, I believe they have communicated updated timelines at this time to all communities regarding their plans for battery installations as well as the solar installations once the snow melts. So I know that they are behind, I know specifically in Verge, one of the things that pushed back the timeline quite a bit was the transformer upgrade. That's something that cost, that was unforeseen by both the contractor and by West Central Initiative. We only found that the project needed a transformer upgrade when they dug into the interconnection paperwork. Because in other areas that they'd worked in before, essentially they had, with utilities, they'd allowed, they allowed an entity to install up to the capacity of the transformer on a given site. For whatever reason, Otter Tail Power only allows you to install up to half of the, half of the capacity of the transformer onsite. And so I believe the transformer at the Verge Community Center had to be upgraded in order to be compatible with the type of solar that we were putting on. And so that added quite a bit of, of obviously time to their, their estimate and is part of what, why there isn't solar on the building already.
I'm just going to note what they gave us for our new timeline because I'm not sure others have seen this. For the electrical schedule, it is the first part of March, for the rough ground schedule, it is the first part of May and the battery work bill out is January. The end, very end of January. And the battery room blueprint is completed.
Yeah.
That was the timelines we got.
That's the timeline I saw as well, so. And we, we do believe they're on track to meet those timelines. They did begin work on a, on a West Central Initiative project as well as they started again work on another project in the city of Ashby. So we believe that those timelines are accurate at this time. Any questions before I talk a little bit about a new opportunity?
I don't think so Griffin.
Okay, sounds good, I'm going to share my screen here. So we are in the process now of putting together our second cohort of communities to explore solar projects. And so I just have to find the documents. Here we are. And so the reason where I'm here today is to see, is to really provide a high level overview of the opportunity that may exist for solar for the fire hall. Can everybody see my screen, I'll zoom in a little here. There we go. Everybody see that all right?
It's kind of little, but yeah, we can see it.
Okay, maybe I can try and make it full size here, my controls are in the way. There we go, is that a little better?
A little bit.
Okay.
Oh, that is.
That is.
Okay, I'm just going to try it there. Okay, so we, we, you know, we heard from, from Julie and Julie that there may be interest in looking at quotes again for the fire hall. So here's some high level analysis on what a potential solar project for a fire, for the fire hall might look like. So it's actually quite a bit better than the, the community center for a couple of reasons that I'll point out here. So first, at a very high level, the fire hall consumes sixty-six thousand sixty-four kilowatt hours per year and it consumes that much energy split between three different services, the small general service which runs the lights, the plug loads, you know, your microwaves, that sort of stuff. Something called fixed time of service, which is used for a heat system in this case and only delivers power from, I believe it's ten PM to six AM. And then an off-peak water heater service. And so the total bill cost per year is three thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, of which two thousand two hundred and eighty-nine sixty-seven is direct, those direct energy charges. In terms, looking at the rate analysis, again, there's a small general service, the fixed time of service and then this off-peak water heater service. The small general service, in the summer, it's seven and a half cents, in the winter, it's five and a half cents, which when you include energy adjustments averages out to about eight cents a kilowatt hour. For the fixed time of service, it's one point oh three two cents in the summer and one point one oh nine cents per kilowatt hour in the winter. And then when you include the energy adjustments, it's an average rate of two point six cents per kilowatt hour. And then the off-peak water heater, which in this case is a very minimal amount of the total use, is three cents in the summer and three point two cents in the winter with an average rate, including energy adjustments, of four point seven cents. Now, when you look at the whole picture and all the energy consumed onsite, the average rate for energy, the average rate paid for energy consumed in the building is three point five eight cents. The reason why this building is still really a good choice for solar is this, the bulk of the energy in the building is consumed under this fixed time of service heat. And like I said, that, that's power that's only delivered at night, which means that when you install a solar system on a building like this, you're going to export almost all of the energy, which means that you get eight point three cents for all of that energy. And so as you can see here, between the average rates, none of the average rates were getting close to eight point three cents. But because of the way that this building runs, it'll, it consumes a lot of energy. So you can put a large solar array on it, but it's going to put almost all of that energy back onto the grid for which you'll get compensated at the retail rate. And then it will be offset when you consume energy overnight. And so I'll scroll down here to the kind of high level analysis for, for solar array. So quite a lot, quite a bit larger than the array for the event center. It'd be a fifty KW DC, forty KW AC, that's the maximum amount that you can install on a public building and still get that retail credit. The system would produce sixty-two thousand two hundred and sixty kilo a year. And so depending on the year, I had access to about three years of bills, it'll offset ninety to a hundred and ten percent of the total annual energy use. So again, really offsetting most, if not all, of the energies in the building. We estimate a total upfront cost of one hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And then again, the rebate, the primary rebate being the Otter Tail Power POP rebate, which for this project, for this sort of array, would come in at fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. And then the thirty percent tax credit, which would come in at thirty-five thousand two fifty, which would make the total incentives ninety-four thousand dollars. And then the balance after incentives, twenty-fourth, or twenty-three thousand five hundred, excuse me. This is the, this is the kicker, annual energy savings, fifty-one hundred dollars. So if you decided to do a project on this building, the solar would more than pay for the total energy bill of the building. In fact, you would have probably a thousand dollars extra on top of the bill you're currently paying for that building. So that's the really big kind of opportunity I see here. And then it would be cash flow positive after about four and a half years of operations. Over a thirty-year lifetime, the project would save the city one hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. And the total energy value, so that's the total value of all the energy it produces over its lifetime, would be one hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars. And then I'll just scroll down a little bit to this cash flow that kind of illustrates that in a more visual manner. And it sounds like we will be, or my colleague Cedar Walters will be presenting to the fire hall board on February second to seek approval, to, to put these details into our cooperative RFP. If that approval is granted, it means that the city and the fire hall board would receive a bid in May or June. It would not, again, as last time, it would not, this, you know, decision tonight or February second doesn't commit the city to anything. It just means that you'll receive a bid and get to decide in May or June if you want to move forward at that point. So maybe I'll pause there for, for questions or comments.
Any questions, the, the energy resilience committee met last week and we didn't have a quorum, but those present were supportive and thought that you go to the fire board and for the next step.
On there, there's the West Central Initiative grant, you have nothing there. So is it because we're going to make money so quickly that we are not eligible or you just don't know?
We just don't know yet, so as you might remember last time, when I, when I was there probably over a year ago now, when I was pitching the first project, we weren't sure like how, how much prices were going to come in. I think last year when I pitched, we were pitching at two fifty or two seventy-five a watt. This, this analysis is at two thirty-five a watt, which is more expensive than the bid we received last year just because of some policy changes at the federal level, we're expecting a little bit of increase in price from last year. But we do know that we're going to be below two fifty a watt. The reason I don't have anything in here is because we don't, we just don't know, A, how many communities are going to move forward with a project and B, what the pricing is going to look like. And depending on the pricing and how many communities move forward, will kind of help us decide how we use grant funds. Obviously, last year, we used the grant funds to pay for battery systems. One thing we're considering this year is if the prices come in at two thirty-five or above, instead of doing larger grants to specific communities for batteries, we might do some smaller grants to all communities to help pay down that cash flow. We just don't know where the pricing will land and we also don't know how many communities will ultimately move forward with the project. And so we're not putting anything in there, but it's possible that West Central Initiative would also be able to contribute grant funds to support this work as well.
Any other questions for Griffin? No, less further questions right now, but Griffin.
Okay, sounds good, if anyone has other questions or comments or anything, Julie, maybe you can share my email address with the council and they can reach me that way. And then, like I said, my colleague Cedar Walters will present to the fire board on February second for that formal approval.
Perhaps we, he could share his slides because they were really hard to.
Yeah, could you send me those slides so that I can have those or is Cedar going to bring those?
Yep, I will, I will send you, send you this copy and I'll be sure Cedar has a couple of copies with her as well.
Thank you.
Electronically sharing with the council too, just because there's a lot of information and like you said, a little hard to see.
Absolutely, and I will just maybe share, here, I'll stop sharing my screen, I will just share some of the other communities we have on board for this second round. We do have a number of communities like Fergus that are returning for a second project. Let me just get that list pulled up here, okay. So as of right now, we have the city of Audubon, the city of Brandon, the city of Chicago, the city of Otter Tail, the city of Rossay, the city of Underwood, the city of Calway, the city of Hiddedall. Those are all new communities that are joining that were kind of inspired by the first cohort. And then Battle Lake, Parker's Prairie, Hoffman and New York Mills are other communities that were in it the first round that are also returning for a second project. So we're hopeful we'll get a, a good price with the number of communities we put together. And, and yeah, we're looking forward to continuing this work in the region.
Well, thank you Griffin, appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you. Julie and Julie, I will see you two tomorrow for our, our meeting, I have some exciting updates to share then.
Thanks, we have anything? Oh, mommy, yeah. I thought, I thought we have one with mommy. Okay, thanks Griffin. Our next order of business is the city center parking lot, Blaine?
Yeah, let me see if I can get my camera on here, there we are. Just a quick update on that, you know, nothing obviously has changed from last month other than we have a, an additional passment above last passment there. And so that amount that you're seeing, that fifty-five thousand, I believe, that's kind of due, you know, to the contractor, that's for all the work that's complete. The last little thing out, that's hanging out there is a little bit of concrete and we talked with the concrete contractor and he seemed willing to look at it in the spring. So we do have three percent retainage held out there to make sure, you know, when we really, once the ice melts, we get a good look at it, if we need to fix it and it seems like we're trending in that direction, that we can get that done in the spring. But otherwise, yeah, overall, a, a good project, Tori and his crew did a really good job. Yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions on the second installment? If not, I'll take a recommendation to approve?
I would, I would make a motion to approve partial pay request number two.
A second.
What, a motion by Bruce and a second by Paul, all in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
You post? We already have an assessment hearing that we'll need to do. Our next meeting is February seventeenth, if we'd want to do it like at six o'clock before our council meeting? Does that soon enough Julie?
Yes.
Thoughts about when? Does that work to just do it when we're together anyway? Okay, so we'll do six PM on February seventeenth. The other recommendation is how many years do we want to indicate their assessment payment? It seems like we've done twenty in the past, but these aren't huge. Do, do you have an idea what they are Julie, I think you were going to take a look at them.
I mean, do you have those exact numbers of what? I mean, I can look up your email too.
Yeah, let me, I can pull them up here real quick. So it's kind of broken into the two different sections as we know, where, when the work was the private work on, on the property that was being directly billed and then what was actually assessed to the property owners, that was by a cost per linear foot basis. And so, yeah, I have those numbers and I can, do you want me to rattle them off or how do you want me to convey those?
I think we're just kind of wondering kind of where the prices are to set the year term.
So we have one person getting three, for assessment costs.
What was it?
Uh, one place is, one parcel is three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents.
Yep.
Another parcel is one thousand six hundred and ninety-three forty-four. Another parcel is eight oh six forty. Another is two thousand sixteen dollars. And the last parcel is two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. For a total of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents.
Uh, that's, that's once you include the city's share of that as well Julie. If you look at what is only being assessed, that amount is ten thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
Well, we can assess the city as well, twenty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-four cents for the two parcels that the city.
And so that, that amount is based off of the, the rate of, I think I said, twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents a linear foot. That's what was presented at the, the public hearing. I suppose that was about a year and a half ago now, that we originally presented that. You know, that's kind of the, the maximum, it exceeded that by a, a little bit, so we can't go above that without reholding a public hearing and at that point, it's, it isn't worth it, I don't think, but to meet the, you know, four twenty-nine statutes, that going with that twenty-six eighty-eight is, is what we'd recommend.
Thoughts of the recommendation for repayment, ten, twenty? Like I said, we've done twenty, but that's usually been considerably more than this amount that we got here, but.
If you went ten, I mean, on the highest one, thirty-four fifty-seven, it must, you know, three hundred and forty-five dollars a year, plus interest.
We know what the interest is.
Right.
It's, is one percent higher than what we got in the bond and I do not know that off the top, I'll have that ready for the public hearing.
Is, if we set that tonight, that's what we'll go into the public hearing then or what if?
Correct. If we don't, if you don't set that, we can't make us, we can't get the information of what, at the public hearing, we won't have all the information available at public hearing. We don't know the years.
But that doesn't mean if that or significant dialogue, if they wanted it more, it could change.
Yes, this is only proposed.
We just really have.
Make a motion that we go ten years on bond for the parking lot improvement project.
All second. We have a motion by Bruce, a second by James. Confer the vote, all in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
Can you post? Okay, we need a motion for the public hearing. Oh gosh, we didn't do that, okay. Can I have a motion to hold the public meeting February seventeenth since at six PM here?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a motion by James, is there a second?
Well, yeah.
We have a second, I'm all in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
Our committee reports. The first one is the approval of the successful performance ratings for the city clerk and utility superintendent. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from James, is there a second?
Okay.
Confer the vote, all in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
Uh, the next item is, we've talked about Minnesota paid leave law. It, it's been placed into our personnel policy, it's on page nine, it's pretty much fine with straight out of the law. And personnel reviewed and approved that section of the policy in personnel. Is there a motion to approve that addition?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from James, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
You post? Okay, that's all we got from personnel, EDA, HRA.
To request a resolution of support from the city council waiving the water and sewer fees and the conditional use permit fee for the daycare project if it gets to that point where it actually becomes a buildable project. At this point in time, we know that one of the things that we're going to have to do is to come up with a pretty, a fairly detailed budget and of course, these numbers would factor into that if we can say they're waived. It helps us with our budgeting.
What are the WAC and SAC fees?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars for water and seven hundred and fifty dollars for sewer per property. So on the property that the EDA has a, or HRA has a purchase agreement on, they would be putting two properties on there. So it would be costing the water one thousand five hundred dollars, the sewer one thousand five hundred dollars. And then they're also asking for the conditional use permit fee to be waived, which is four hundred dollars. So we're talking about three thousand four hundred dollars divided up between those three different entities, general fund, water fund and sewer.
Think we've done that in the past for community projects of this nature, so we'll see if we get to that point, it would be nice to see if we get to a point where we're actually going to build it.
Yeah, I mean, daycare has been kind of a priority in the city, so.
A lot of I's and T's to cross between now and that actually happening. Other thing I see is you don't really want to miss a meeting of this group because you could be nominated as chairman.
So is the, I, is the resolution separate? Or can we? They have a resolution for support, okay. Is there a recommendation that we would waive the WAC and SAC fees and the conditional use permit for a daycare?
I would make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second, all in favor and keep this thing aye?
Aye.
You post? The other part is a resolution, the EDA was wanting to make sure, they have to, they go through all this work that it would come to the council and then not get supported, so. um, not get supported, um, so they were requesting that there be a resolution that the E D A um, as well as having those fees waived would have city council support as they move forward um, with investigating the daycare.
And that will help as we also apply for different grants that are available um to a project of this nature, so I would make a motion that the council approve resolution twenty twenty six dash zero zero one um, indicating city council support of that potential project.
We have a motion from Bruce, is there a second? We have a second from Paul, all in favor and keep a saying eye.
Aye.
Um, the liquor store municipal building.
Um, we had a meeting. Last week. Their one recommendation to council um, was that the step up boutique had requested signage last meeting and we approved um, some but not all of the signage and we, the signage that we did not approve got kind of altered and still hung up. So what they had originally requested was the step up boutique sign next to the door. We did not approve it and we told them to come back to us, but it's something that had different wordage that would have liquor store and step up boutique on there. They went ahead and redid it and they hung it up, but it hasn't been approved, nor is it branded in a way that goes with the liquor store and then the wording of the policy and their agreement that it cannot to take away from sales of the liquor store or detract from liquor store at all, so.
And then it wasn't here without drilling.
Yes, it is not adhered with drilling or anything, but it's, it's
I never did look at the back of it, so I don't know how it's attached. I don't know if it's double sided tape or Velcro, I'm not sure.
I don't know, but in this one, we should look into.
I just know after our last meeting, not the meeting like a week ago that he's talking, the meeting like a month or so ago that we discussed that.
Yeah, it was before small town Christmas.
Yes.
I think so, it was right around that time. I probably failed in how I worded it to them. I told them there are no nails, screws, absolutely nothing to be on the exterior. Failed to say no signage.
What was your conversation after, since this meeting, have you had?
I've never been able to find her. I came in on the weekend, I wrote a note up there for her. Letting her know about tonight.
Sorry, recommendation to the city council, we need to remove the step up sign by the entrance. That is not, if you're true are branding something and wasn't approved.
I would put them back then to what our decision was that the December council meeting is to come back with a revised design. I would make a motion to remove the existing sign and to follow council's December recommendations.
Is there a second?
On second.
We have a motion from Bruce, the second from James, all in favor and keep a saying eye.
Aye.
Anything else? Just the one recommendation. Okay, then we have event center, that's you, James.
Um, so the only recommendation that we have for the event center is, let me just see what this oh wait, put it in here. We've had a little bit of an issue since the last city council meeting regarding the ashtrays around town, around the event center. Um, and um, we've recently kind of fixed that a little bit. Um, but in the process, we've gotten um some pushback from the city employees as a part of how the policy reads as to who has control over this building or how this building is run. Um, we just recommend that the city council um, look at the policy um, as far as um, city employees as a poet for safety of this building. Essentially, what had happened was, um, we had, last meeting, we agreed that the ashtrays would be taken off. And that was agreed upon, it was not communicated correctly apparently. And um, we got some pushback saying that as an advisory board that we advise the city council, but we do not make um, we do not
Make the rules.
Make the rules. And our only concern is that in a safety situation, we do not have the three weeks to wait for a meeting. And the decision that we had made was to remove them for the safety of not having the building burned down. So we would just like that looked at um, as so that we cannot have these problems in the, in the future. Um, Julie did attach the personnel policy for this building.
No.
No, no, she's, I noticed that yet. Um, we need to look at it, so we'll bring it back to next meeting, but I just wanted.
When I looked, it's outdated, so it'd be a great opportunity to um, and it, it does kind of outline the various responsibilities, so if they're not clear, then it gives you an opportunity.
We have gotten the with our meeting, the um, ashtrays were removed. Um, we discussed different options, we did not come to a, to a final say what was gonna happen, but I, my understanding is that there were purchased, new ones were purchased after that meeting. Um, and that's where we're at with that.
Well, I guess we should look at the policy and see what it says, but I, you know, I don't use the ashtrays, I'm not I know where the front was and they're kind of like a sand or something and you put your cigarette butt in.
Used to be, yes.
And just my concern, if we don't have ashtrays, where are those butts gonna end up? They're gonna end up in a vest.
Our, our concern was that they should not be attached to the building so that they can be removed, like moved away from the building if they were on fire.
Right.
Which was not able to happen at that time. That was our suggestion, yeah, and that was the one that was having issues. Our only recommendation is that they were moved until we figured out another option. It was never to not have them, it was just to remove them for the time needed, so.
What is the footage? They have to be.
Well, you can't smoke within twenty feet of them.
Twenty feet?
Of the door.
That's smoking, but your ashtrays, there is no state statute, no, um
I couldn't find.
Right, yeah, um, Otterdale County and the city of Virgus does not have. But there is a recommendation from, um, that states best practice is fifteen to twenty five feet from any entrance, window or air intake.
So I think we're gonna have a, a problem, if you have them farther away from the door than you have them, they don't use them as much. Um, so I don't think it was like the biggest problem was having them away from the door, it was just more so having them connected to the building, yeah.
I do think we have to observe some distance, because I have gotten complaints about people that go in the municipal building towards the liquor store, considering someone who has a tendency to smoke right outside the door. And they find that it bothers, so it's a lot there, so.
Not even kind of briefly dug into that too, about like what Julie just said about how there is no distance requirement for the ashtray itself, because I, I smell it too, I can smell when people put them out and come in and I see it out there smoking just coming into the door. And I often wondered that with the clean air act that it's only two feet away from the front door.
Yeah, I thought it'd be a good time as we're looking at new ashtrays going up to take a look at that footage, and you want it convenient, but you don't want it right at the doorway where.
Smokers again, I have that issue, but most smokers are you know, probably want to put their butts on, you know.
If anything does get decided with the event center on that, I would like to hear it as well, might even propose it at the liquor store too. All of them know what they're doing, okay.
Yeah, they just gave the shop today.
So we'll take a look at how many feet and then before they're installed, are they mounting?
You know, you might have the more you can just grab them. Whatever. Yeah, the ones that look between the ankle. Yeah. Ankle and lunes desk are what exactly like that one.
I, I do agree that, I do see more butts hitting the ground if we don't have them there. Like, I already see people dumping their ashtrays from their car right on the alley between us and the Derek market town. Yeah, there's a lot of butts out there, even though we have an ashtray right over there.
Okay. Thank you. I guess we are down to staff reports, um, wait.
I presented my reports, you guys. They performed, do you guys have any questions?
Um, do we, was there any follow up or keyie shorts? Because in our last meeting, there was going to be follow up on C U matters that's still not resolved.
Yeah, we and Blaine went out there and looked at it, oh, like he's not on there, I guess. Still didn't meet the criteria.
So there was going to be discussion engineer to engineer, did you know that ever occur, did you have a chance to talk to the engineer?
Yes, so I, um, Keith had emailed uh, the engineer and then C C me on it, um, and then I also emailed the engineer. I haven't heard back from them yet. Um, so that's where that sits currently.
Okay. Any other questions on that? If not, uh, liquor store report.
Um, at the end of quarter four. Um, let's see. We're still waiting on some sign material from J H signs that's on back order, that's the last we heard from them. Um, as soon as that signage material shows up, they should be installed in the main liquor store sign up on top of the roof. Um, mid time December, gutters were installed. Some concerns were brought to the meeting, it's nothing that had to get brought up here, I'm getting different quotes for different gutters to potentially bring to council, maybe, I don't even know, it could be in my next meeting or next February, but so gutters may be getting brought up again soon to the council. Hold on as I load here. So I don't think we could actually, I do a year end PowerPoint preview, I don't think we could attach it, I don't know if you guys got a printout of it.
No, they didn't.
I already bought two. Or did you get a PDF? I'm not sure.
They didn't get anything.
It might not be too crucial, I can.
We just kind of got your fourth quarter sales and your, um that's kind of what you know.
Does kind of summarize, I mean, it includes first quarter, second quarter.
I guess the PowerPoint I was asking, that's just kind of the, the fun numbers throughout the year, I didn't know if you guys got that one yet or not.
No, they have not, okay, but I will get that.
Well, before we, I don't know if you're emailing it, before we get to that, um, yeah, sales have decreased from twenty five versus twenty four. That's not just us, I mean, fortunately, it's not just us, but unfortunately, we are affected by it as well, it's kind of a nationwide thing happening right now. Well, part of it. I mean, we're, we're still let's see, we still exceeded over a million in sales, we did exceed last year's sales by roughly one point, one thousand eight hundred dollars higher than last year's. Yeah, last year we hit one million twelve thousand, this year we hit just shy of one million fourteen. So yes, we're still getting the sales, yes, we're still blowing in the profit, but it is not the increase that we were expecting, that I was expecting.
Uh, but that's probably representative of the nationwide trends or whatever we hear all.
Initially, so Virgus Liquor Store is part of an organization called M M B A, it's Minnesota Municipal Liquor Association. All municipal liquor stores have the option of being a part of it. I don't know, maybe four or five months into the year, the, the head president of that was reaching out to all of us, asking us for our sales history. Was too much long after that, asking for T H C history, and it sounded like they were maybe going to some national conference to discuss sales there as well. So it, it is trending, alcohol sales are definitely trending downward nationwide. So support local as much as you possibly can, that's for sure. Were we able to get that over?
Yeah, we still have our PowerPoint here.
Okay, then we'll kind of briefly touch on that. Yeah, we did exceed over a million again this year, which you guys can see on the first slide there, um approximate profit after all expenses, that's utility bills, wages, everything should be approximately thirty two thousand. That is an estimated number, we're still waiting to hear from the state auditor whenever she comes and gets our audit done. Um, several months ago, we transferred over twenty thousand dollars into the Virgus General Fund. And just little over thirteen thousand was given back into the community in a form of some type of discount, whether that's senior, um, veteran, military. The next slide is I put in our comparisons from twenty four to twenty five. So the first one, which is our sales comparison, obviously, we want to see that orange bar, which is twenty five, to be slightly higher than the blue one. Some months it is, some months it's not. And unfortunately, the months where we really want to be up, which is like June, July, August, that's where it's down. June, July, I guess it's down, not August. I don't get any questions as we go, or? Keep going then. Um, I kind of briefly broke it down by categories as far as what we're selling. Um, with the new P O S software, I, I'm no longer able to pull the report to show percentage, so I don't know the exact percentage of like what beer is doing, what wine is doing. But at least shows a number of products sold per category and the dollars that it brought in.
Uh, just a question on expense comparison, of course, um obviously, um expenses were greater than twenty twenty four also.
Yeah.
What factors entered into that, the wholesale prices of liquor or what?
I, I do see some wholesaling pricing going up, um, I think our insurance is probably also a big factor in that, that was a correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, I believe that that was a decent increase there.
Fourteen percent increase.
Yeah.
So I just wondered.
And like at the very beginning of that bar graph as well, or whatever graph that is. I don't, I don't focus too much on how it drastically changes in January, February like that, because municipals typically try and thin our stock out at the end of the year. Then come the beginning of fiscal year, that's when we're looking for those crazy buys. But, yeah, so the expense is not just liquor, it's everything to keep that store open, yeah. Um, onto the sales statistic page, I'm not gonna read off all the numbers, it just kind of gives some fun numbers of how many products we sold throughout the year, how many transactions. The average transaction is about neck and neck with last year at twenty seven dollars and change per transaction. Um, kind of fun when I put in there, the amount of price that we sold was over twenty five thousand pounds and almost all of that got hauled into the store by employees. And then, yeah, at the very end there, I just like to put in our top products that we sold, so I kind of accumulated all of our top ten shooters, which were over eleven thousand little airplane shooters that we did. And then the top beer was Bush Light, followed closely by Coors Light and Keystone. And that's just the end of that, unless there's any questions.
Any other questions from Kyle? I guess not, thank you, Kyle, this was, that was a good overview, thank you.
I think I said it last year, I don't give this big overview every single quarter, it's just kind of a year end recap.
Um, quick treasure, Julie.
All right, I also gave you a written report um, on what is going on. The one grant that was submitted, the M D H implementation grant, we were awarded the grant. Uh, but the availability of grant funds have been exhausted. And so our application is sitting on a list when the state gets funds for that, that's when they'll distribute that. So we're on a, yes, you're approved, but you have to wait, you can't do anything until um, they can sign the paper work and, um, they're able to hang up on me.
Which, essentially?
That's the, um, N D H implementation, it's where we want to put the fence up around the water tower.
Any other questions with Julie, you can go for a report here. And thank you, Julie. Wanting to. Draft for twenty twenty five. Um, past annual addresses have had a focus on planning, vision for the future and partnerships. And those things remain important to the list of the city, but this year resilience was introduced as an importance. To the future of Burgess, resilience is the capacity to anticipate, adapt, respond to disruptions while maintaining. Essential functions that ensure long term survival and growth. Through collaboration with E E S M C, which was the Empowering Small Minnesota Communities. R S D P, the Regional Sustainable Development Partnership. And W C I, West Central Initiative, Burgess has advanced our efforts to strengthen city resilience. The twenty twenty two City Comprehensive Plan remains our overarching roadmap roadmap for the future of Burgess to the year twenty thirty six. Current at eighty six percent of the identified strategies have either been completed or have had some progress made. Parking, housing and businesses were the top focus areas which have received ongoing attention since twenty twenty two. Of note, in twenty twenty five was the completion of the city center parking lot. And additionally, two handicap parking designations were added to the downtown parking. But the three housing, um new housing additions, ninety four percent of the lots have been sold. The E D A, the Economic Development Administration and H R A, the Housing redevelopment Authority. And the Burgess Community Club, they have continued to provide the strong support to the the business community. The E D A H R A continues to offer the Business Facade Improvement Program. And is maintaining the C I A for Community and Economic Development Associates contract for twenty twenty six. C I A has been invaluable in providing services and expertise in identifying improvement opportunities and funding resources. The E D A H R A made it a priority this year to secure daycare in Burgess. A purchase agreement has been made that secures the daycare location at three oh three Elton Avenue. The E D A H R A is visiting other community daycares, researching grant opportunities. And established a daycare committee to lay out the operational framework. It should also be noted, the community, Burgess Community Club maintains a high visibility through the hosting. Uh, community events to bring people to those and has expanded um the looney and holiday dollars to direct spending to our local businesses. Within the comprehensive plan, the importance of our parks and open space was also identified. This was further validated by a resilience and energy survey that we conducted in April this year. The protection of lakes and our natural environment score is a high hysteria concern in the survey. In a twenty twenty three Parks Improvement Plan um was devised, the Long Lake Park is very important to Burgess. Recreationally, environmentally and economically. Funding has been the area to execute the plan, in November, the city council approved the sales tax resolution. To request permission from the state legislature for a half cent sales tax increases when the city retail sales. If approved, this would be placed on the November twenty sixth elections ballot. Based on historical data of city sales, it's anticipated it would take approximately five years to raise the one point two million dollar. Estimated project cost, additionally, in twenty twenty three, a city of Burgess Trail feasibility study had been conducted. And this year Burgess was connected to the Heart of Lakes Trail, next step would be to connect to the Heartland Regional Trail. Which is targeted for the year twenty thirty one. In May twenty twenty four, the Burgess, city of Burgess was awarded grants um from the. Empowering Small Minnesota Communities and the Regional Sustainable Development Partnership. The grants focused on engaging in energy initiatives with direct benefits to the community fiscally and environmentally. It entailed baseline assessments of our municipal building, energy use, energy audits of the municipal buildings and building enclosure and down options. The city received another grant from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. To make the identified weatherization improvements to the event center, fire call and the liquor store municipal building. These grants had positioned the city of Burgess to receive further funding, which was through the West Central Initiative for the installation of solar panels. At the event center, along with the installation of a battery bank that will support decreasing energy costs. And provide energy backup capabilities for the community in the event of a power failure. In twenty twenty four, Burgess became the one hundredth and forty ninth Minnesota community to become a green step city. And this year, a level two of five was achieved, Green Steps is a recognition program that helps cities achieve resilience, sustainability and quality of life goals. To guide the city in achieving identified best practices and energy resilience. Um, advisory board was established this past year, energy grant data, results of the community energy resilience survey. And best practices outlined in the Green Step Program is guiding work toward achievements in the following priority areas. Energy and building infrastructure, natural environment and green infrastructure, water leak systems and emergency preparedness and management. In summary, Burgess has moved forward and experienced significant momentum in twenty twenty five. And demonstrated what is truly possible, even if you're a small community. The twenty twenty five story would be defined as what is possible, what is possible when a small town uses data partnerships. Commitment and community engagement to achieve advancement, resilience and quality of life. While keeping the small town charm in the heart of the community. And that is the twenty twenty five address. Along with the address, it it noted that our comprehensive plan and in your pocket, there were, this plan was done in uh twenty twenty two. There were fifty eight strategies and fifty of those strategies, you know, we're seeing some progress, some we've actually closed out because. They're basically done, there's not more we can do. Um, there are eight areas where we really aren't seeing traction, granted, this plan goes to twenty thirty six. But it would be nice to just see if, you know, are they, you know, are they viable, are they? Ones that are there that we don't see, that there is a need, so I think we're gonna just kind of put those out in uh to the areas that would have. Some oversight and and kind of see whether they think like, one was conduct a feasibility study for soccer fields and frisbee golf. Does it need to be that specific, or as uh you probably noticed in the park board minutes, they want to take a look at the little league field. Maybe it's something we can incorporate there, um, show uh show snowshoe rental companies, look at them. I don't know, you know, does that follow in the realm of our our cop plan, so we're gonna kind of put those. Eight of those out and just see if if they're viable and and at the five year mark, we'll take some time to just really overall evaluate, but. Um, um, you know, it it's pretty incredible with that, we, you know, eighty six percent of these fifty eight strategies are. We're seeing some work done, so uh kudos, because it isn't us doing the work, there is lots of groups and community doing this work, so. Uh, we appreciate all their all their efforts. Any questions or further comments on the plan? Well, not just for information announcements, don't forget about our April eighth. Uh, border review and our hazardous waste is June twenty third. And then uh the employee trainees that we had previously um approached at the beginning, like the end of the year, so. Including on our agenda, can I have a motion to approve or to move motion to return?